Okay, I call to order the Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, April 24th, 2019. The first order of business is the following public hearing item. It's a petition of Oaklink LLC to rezone approximately 39 acres. And I don't know if I need to read every number, but there's a lot of numbers there. And it's along Clopton Court and Preserve Drive to remove a previously approved proffer requiring the construction of a left-hand turn lane from Link Road onto Preserve Drive. Tom?
Members of the Planning Commission, this property was rezoned from R2 Low to Medium Density Residential to Medium Density, R3 Medium Density Residential conditional on April 10th of 2012. The purpose of that rezoning was to allow the development of the property for a mixture of single household detached and single household semi-detached with up to 78 units. At the time of the rezoning, the petitioner had proffered voluntarily to extend a left turn lane on Link Road to Preserve Drive in lieu of completing a traffic impact analysis. The thought at the time between the transportation engineer and the petitioners were that the study would come back and show that a left turn lane was warranted, so instead of doing that study, they just agreed to construct it and proffered that. Since that time, the petitioner and the city were working towards having that left turn lane constructed. AEP actually relocated poles and utility lines, and that was under the city's franchise agreement. However, now the petitioner has decided and is coming back to you and council requesting not to have to construct that left turn lane because they've reduced the number of units. They've completed a traffic study now that shows because of the reduced units, the left turn lane is not warranted. And that's fine. However, since the turn lane is not being constructed, Verizon is not willing to relocate their lines and the second, and remove the second set of poles at their cost as would normally happen under the city's franchise agreement. The city's attorney is, has offered the opinion that the city cannot require Verizon to move it. So if this rezoning is approved to remove the proffer, the turn lane would not be constructed, and one or two things would happen. One, the two sets of poles would remain, as you see here, along Link, Link Road, or the city would have to come in at their cost and pay Verizon to move the lines. Staff does not feel like the city is obligated to move those, and therefore, to prevent the unsightliness of the second set of utility lines, we are recommending that you not approve the rezoning until an acceptable agreement is reached on what to do with those utilities.
So who is here to speak on behalf of this petition? If you can please come forward and sign your name, state your name.
The sign-in sheet's down there.
Right over there.
Okay. The problem will be me hearing you, I'm afraid.
The sign-in.
Oh.
No, no.
You're right.
We're trying to point to the sign-in sheet. If you could.
Over here?
Thank you.
Oh. Thank you. I'm Jeff, and I've got Paul, and my head's just big today, so speak up, please. Who you want to start?
So tell us, tell us what the, what your petition is about and what you'd.
When we, initially, when we laid out a site plan for the Preserve, we planned for 84 lots. We could have had many more, but we chose, as the name says, to preserve all the green space we could up and down Link Road. It was important to us. At 84 lots, it was a pretty sure thing that VDOT regulation would require us because it's the, you only have one ingress and egress out of the Preserve. And it was a pretty sure thing that we would exceed the, that it would be warranted that we would have to have a left turn lane. There's nothing advisable about it. Link Road is, has a lot of safety problems. There, in the five-year period that went with the traffic study that we did, there were 14 accidents from Otter View to the stoplight. There was zero anywhere along the front edge where the entrance is to the Preserve. You know, the, the idea was, is that we would have, that cars would be going down Link Road, and they would be backed up trying to get into the Preserve. But that's, that's just, I mean, if you had to wait 15 seconds to turn into the Preserve, you'd be surprised. I don't, so, so we went back and did the study. We have reduced it from 84 lots down to 68 maximum. And, and as it turns out, there is no warrant for that turn lane to be built now. And it's not advisable. It's gonna, it's gonna widen that, you know, we have a lot of people, we welcome people to walk their dogs and to come over and walk all through the Preserve. We have a lot of traffic over there. They cross right there. You're talking about adding an additional lane, but then you're also talking about adding a second lane for ingress and egress out of the Preserve. You're creating a nasty left-hand turn coming out of the Preserve if you have these two lanes. It's just a solution that is in search of a problem. The real problem that's brewing, and I don't know how long it'll be, probably years before it's too big a problem, but you can stack up about 25 or 30 cars at the light if you're heading up Link Road towards Rivermont and Boonsborough. You can stack up about 25 or 30 cars before there's any, before there's any problem turning into the Preserve. The problem is at the stoplight at Link Road. And back when we originally made, when, when we started to develop the project, we and Oakwood, the owners of Oakwood Country Club now, gave the uneasement so that there could be a right-hand turn lane as you get to that stoplight, which would relieve a lot of traffic that could go ahead and make the turn. So, I mean, I think that's a real issue, and it's not really an issue at all now. And of course, the traffic study takes the, we're about 60% of the way through the development of the Preserve. The traffic study takes into account that it's all being, you know, that there's people everywhere. The, the issue of the polls is interesting. The ordinance for the, you tell, I understand that Verizon just, Verizon doesn't want to do what they're obligated to do. Appalachian didn't have any problem. They came out and said, of course we're gonna do it. It's, it's in our, it's, it's on, it's in ordinance. It's ordinance 35-27A, and it starts out with, "In the absence of an agreement to the contrary, yada, 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 utilities are required to bear the entire costs of relocating from a public right-of-way whenever requested to do so by state or local authorities." And over some period of time, there has been, Verizon has taken the position, yeah, but this was caused by the developers. But the ordinance doesn't even state that, honestly. And there's a local ordinance that backs up the state, and I guess it's federal, but there's a local ordinance that says the same thing. So Appalachian came in and said, of course we'll move it. That's part of our franchise agreement with the city. When we had our technical review committee hearing, and Appalachian's representative, is it Tom Wolford?
Wolford?
Wolford, yeah. He said, hey, Verizon's a problem everywhere we go. We move our polls, and we send them letters, and we wait weeks and months for them to ever take care of the things. I mean, you know, we all heard it. I mean, he, he really went on about it. He didn't need to. He said, you know, these guys are just a bad actor. That's just, so, they're, they're trying to put the cost on us, and we're not trying to put it on the city. We're, you know, we're taxpayers too. I mean, Verizon has a franchise agreement with the city, and it's not owning up to it. Interestingly enough, they're out there moving lines right now. Go figure then. Apparently, they haven't gotten a request from the city. They hadn't gotten an order from us. They're out there putting up, yesterday morning, they were up putting, putting fiber cables up. To take it a little further, I guess to give you the whole story, you know, at one point, Verizon refused to give us service, by the way. There is no Verizon service in Oakwood. They don't have a good product. Nobody wants them. Everybody wants high-speed. They want Comcast. Nobody wants Verizon. I mean, they might when, you know, in the future, they might, but Verizon doesn't have a saleable product right now, and developers, lots of developers aren't able to get Verizon to put the lines in because nobody's got by the service. So, so we're talking about fighting this thing. You know, how are we gonna fight Verizon? You know, we're gonna go to court and fight Verizon over this if the city won't. You know, we tried to, we had Jim Richards, our attorney, talk to Walter Irwin, and Walter pretty much said, you know, you're right, Jim, the ordinance says that they're responsible for it, but over the years, it's gotten to be that it's really not quite, the intent is different, but we've never have rewritten the ordinance. So we thought, well, we'll just see how much this is gonna cost, because, you know, time is money, and we're not able to complete our development. We've got 20, 24 more lots to go in that last section out of 68. I mean, it's a significant part of the whole project. So we, we had, and we got Lee Newland, engineer, came out and met with us. I mean, I asked him to, to kind of be there to see if, if he thought it was as fishy as we did. And so Verizon sent a field representative out there that said it'd be $15,000 to $20,000, and they'd get the paperwork in the mail to us. We thought, well, for $15,000 or $20,000, maybe we just pay the damn thing. Excuse me, but that's exactly how we felt. So the letter came, and it was $138,500. So we got back to Verizon and said, you know, we don't consider ourselves to be responsible for any of this to start with, but how is it that you start at 15 to 20, and we end up at 138,500? So they came back to us and said, we'll do it for 55. I mean, give me a break. And it really boils down to, it's an issue between the city and Verizon, and the city shouldn't have to pay it. The city should not be held responsible for that. That's the whole story.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. I should have asked you this when you did your presentation, Mr. Martin, but you referenced that there were some, if I heard, there were still some negotiations going on, is that correct?
Well, not to my knowledge. What I was informed by the city engineer is that Verizon stated that since the turn lane is not being constructed, or would not be constructed, it's not considered a city project, so they are not obligated to move the lines at their cost. The city attorney has given the opinion that that is correct, and there's no way that the city can obligate Verizon to move the lines. So again, if you remove this proffer, you're taking the petitioner, the developer, completely out of the picture, and one or two things will happen. One, the lines will stay that the way they are, or two, the city would have to come up with the cost to move it. And I do not, staff does not feel that the city is obligated to fund the cost since the relocation of the poles was due to their development.
Why did, why did American Power, why did Apco move the, the poles?
Because I believe they were proceeding with construction of the turn lane at one time.
Would it be good to hear from others who might be supportive?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I meant to ask.
Yeah, Mr. Shea, if you could have a seat and find out if there's anybody who wants to speak in favor of this as well?
You know, you know, those poles have been a problem for decades. I mean, they've been run into and knocked down and everything else, and they're in the city right-of-way. The ordinance says that if the city feels that it needs to make an improvement to, it needs to relocate it, can do it. And it, whether we ever developed the old golf course or didn't, those poles, those poles have been a, you know, they're, they're right on the edge of the pavement, and they've, they've always been there. So it's not, it's not necessarily all about, it's, it's not all about the development bringing this on. It's just a longstanding problem, and we've given, we've given the land to move the poles way off, and also so that if there was a turn lane 30 or 40 years down the road that was needed there, we've given the land for that too.
Yeah, we appreciate that. We would like to hear from other people who might want to weigh in on that as well. Is there anybody who would like to speak in favor of this? Who'd like to weigh in? And you're welcome to come up.
We're in here looking across the street, so I'm.
Okay, okay.
I'm kinda speaking on both sides of the issue.
Okay, that's fine. So, so let's see if there's anybody opposed, opposed to this. Kind of just, that'd be fine, you can come on up.
I walked in late. It's a really important issue to me. I, when you say vote in favor, or speak in favor, I'm not sure.
Yeah, so what, what that means is if, if Mr. Shea is speaking in favor of this proposal to remove the proffer and not have turn lanes, and then we want to hear from people who might have a differing opinion. So if you're in favor of Mr., Mr. Shea's proposal, you come speak, or if you want to speak against it, either way. Or if you want to speak on both sides, you may too. But, um, Mr. Shea, if you could have a seat and let one of them come forward?
He's, he's the smartest of the three. I'll speak for yourself.
Derek?
Yes.
We'll have you sit down.
Okay.
And if you could sign in, please.
Sure. No problem. Yeah, and we'll give you three minutes to.
Okay. After I sign in.
Yeah, speak, speak your mind. Tell us your name.
Yeah, my name is Tim Miles. I live at 1747 Link Road, so I live directly across from the entrance of the Preserve. And I was here when we did the, the previous Planning Commission discussion 10 years ago. And so from the, our point of view, we were kind of against the turn lanes because it's gonna make for three of the houses, my house and two above me, have to turn across two lanes of traffic now to get into our, into our driveways. On occasion, we back out of our driveways, and two of our neighbors back out a lot. So initially, we were basically against having the turn lanes, and we worked with Lee Newland, and he came out and met with us, and more kudos to Lee on, on the process. So, so from that point of view, we are kind of supportive of not doing the turn lanes. So that's, we're for that part of the deal. And that, that may be kind of short-sighted, because from the point of view of people in the, in the Preserve, in the long term, they actually may want the turn lanes, but I'm speaking for my own selfish regard here. The other issue would be the poles, and so that will leave that double set of poles that you saw. And from an aesthetic point of view, now, we look out upon the, that double set of poles. David Simon will speak about what his issue is with it also. And Chuck will also point out that now with AEP poles moved back, the light that comes over the street are shorter, and so now we don't have, so our house is actually darker at night than it, than it has been. So Chuck Hurt, maybe, will speak about that, but the, one of our concerns would be having the longer light out over the street to give us a better light in the street there, which may be a safety concern in the long run. We've been on a really good run, safety-wise, over the years at, on Link Road. We've had a lot of accidents, as you well know. We had a car actually spin off and hit our house one time, so we are very fortunate that it seems like, safety-wise, it has been better. I've occasionally had a situation where I'm turning into my driveway, and the cars have started to back up a little bit, turning right and into left into Preserve, and you get in kind of a, you know, no one can do anything, and so I, I go and keep on going, turn around in Oakwood and come back. So that's happened on occasion. So that's a non-scientific sampling of, you know, that problem could, could increase in the future too. So, thank you for your service, and thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. That'd be great. Next person want to come up and speak? There's a couple more I know. If you could just please sign your name and state your name, and then talk to us.
I live at 1663 Link Road, and from a practical standpoint, there's really not a need for the turn lanes. There's not that much traffic that's coming out, and right now, with all the construction, you know, it would probably be at the peak of what we're gonna see, and you just don't see that much. Some of the streets further down, I can't think of the name of the one right now, has more lots than this one, and you just don't see, it's a, you just don't see that volume of traffic coming out where you need turn lanes for it. It's not a practical thing. The, and I agree that if you've got, if you add two more lanes out there, I think it's just gonna make for a lot of confusion when people, if they're trying to back out or trying to make turns or things like that, you're gonna have all these lanes you gotta cross there. I think that's gonna add a little bit more confusion than is really necessary, because if you go up and down Link Road, you don't see that anywhere else. And so that's, that's not something, if you were out on Old Forest Road, I think that would be appropriate, you know, for turning in a lot of the places that have, you know, that have a large amount of traffic. One thing that is a little bit odd is, is that as they move the poles back and the lights, as he, as Tim mentioned, the lights are actually, they're not even over the road anymore. They're, they're back over the, in fact, back behind the hedges. And there's a, there's a fair amount of light that comes out the front, but it's that, that whole section through there where the, the poles have been relocated, there's, the street's kind of dark at night. And so something need, I've talked to AEP, I know some people there, and they've got some 12-foot arms, you see, they're 10 or 12-foot arms, they can put on it. Those are short, four or five-foot arms. And that would have been fine if the, if the turn lanes had been put in. But anyway, they, they might be able to extend those out. I'm not sure what to do about the utilities that haven't been moved. That's gonna be an awkward thing down through there, and I'm not sure exactly, if the city has the ability to enforce on Verizon their responsibility to do this, if they had done it when AEP had come out here and done it, then it'd been taken care of, it'd been done at that point. And they didn't, they, they drug their feet. And I tend to agree, I've, over the years, have been involved in a lot of utility work, and Verizon drags their feet not only here, but over in Richmond and other places, because their product is, they don't get as, the wireless side is where they get their money from, not the wired side. So I, I would, one thing I would like to see is the land that the Preserve gave to the city up at the intersection of Link and Boonsborough, is turn lane up there. That would really help out a lot. I, I watch the traffic in the mornings and the evenings. It backs up to my driveway, which is, you know, I don't think it's a quarter of a mile, but it's coming up on a quarter of a mile, and you've got 25, 30 cars easy in there. And when the guys came up there and were reworking the lights, I told the guy, I said, if you would give another 10 seconds on the green, you, you know, what happens is, just about the time the traffic gets moving, it cuts them off, and then they, it just keeps getting longer and longer, and they were backing up to the Preserve, if not past that. And it's gotten a little bit better, but if the city wants to do anything up there in terms of, of solving that problem at that intersection, it would be to use that right turn lane, or to build a right turn lane up there.
Great, thanks. I'm sorry, you see, that we have a three-minute time limit, so, sorry about that.
I got four in, all right.
I appreciate, got a 33% increase there. Next person.
Hi, I'm David Simon. I live at 1759 Link, and right next to Mr. Miles' house, and, and right at the entrance of the Preserve. I would agree with what everybody's said in terms of, I haven't seen really a backup and a need for the turn lanes. The, in terms of the traffic caused by the extra neighborhood, I haven't really seen that as an issue, and I'd agree with Mr. Hurt, that what I have seen is that lack of right turn lane at Rivermont and Boonsborough, it'll back up past the Preserve and past my driveway, in which case it's very difficult to get out and go that direction. What drove AEP, I think, to go ahead and get these poles in? Sure, they were preparing for the road, and they were doing work towards that end, but then when that tornado hit last year, it drove them to jump on this and to get it done. And, you know, there's a whole bunch of problems with these double poles. Number one, it's terribly unsightly from everybody in the neighborhood, you know, along Link Road. I think that decreases the property value of everybody's property. In addition, when they were preparing to do the entrance to the Preserve, it caused them to change the spacing on the poles, and one of the poles got put directly across from my driveway, and I'm one of the people that doesn't have a U, so I have to back out. It's claimed to, including my mother-in-law's vehicle, trying to back out onto busy Link Road and just tagging that pole square. And, you know, so that, that's caused damage to personal property. It's just dangerous and difficult to get out there. You know, and, and just, I think the, I am not, I'm not strong on the fact that we need the entrance widened, but one concern I have was, I'm sorry, I don't know this gentleman's name, but when I first walked in, I was running late, he mentioned that if we relieve the neighborhood from doing this, that it relieves the, the obligation of the neighborhood to help move this. To me, the biggest issue is getting rid of that second set of poles. And you can see, a lot of these poles, if you look at some of them further down and things, some of them are leaning towards the road, some away from the road. Some of that's from the tornado that we had, and these were also cut off by the power company and shortened. So they're, they're unsightly, not very stable. They're right smack on the edge of Link Road, and if you get off the road just a tiny bit is, we all have done on occasion, you know, that could, you know, do serious damage to a vehicle and potentially claim a life. So, you know, I feel like we have these brand-new poles, they're strong, sturdy, properly anchored, and the Verizon lines need to go over there, irrespective of, of what's done with the entrance. But I completely agree, what's really needed is that right turn lane up, up at Boonsborough and Rivermont, not so much the widening of this street. But if, if it comes down to it, I would rather have the widening of the street to get those poles off of where they are currently, that first set.
Great, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Anybody else want to come forward and speak? Okay, if not, we'll close the public hearing and open it up to discussion.
Well, I think we can, there's a lot of good input here, but we don't need to discuss what's going on at Boonsborough. We don't need to discuss a lot of these other points that's not.
No.
That's not under consideration. Not that they're not valid and important, but those are things that can be approached to city council and planners. We're here to decide this issue, and I don't think we need to debate the legalities of what's going on. The city attorney has made an opinion, and that's how it stands, and we can bash Verizon or whomever all we want and not accomplish anything.
And it seems, it seems like, since there's no project, Verizon has no, there's no legal, really, it doesn't seem like there is a legal reason for the movement, because there is no project ongoing. And if their project starts up, they will move them.
Is public safety not a reason enough to move them? I mean, they're almost in the road.
It wouldn't have to do with this, though. They have been, though, for, for years. I think they've been in the same place. That's, that's the thing that I think is like, well, they've been there forever. You know, AEP moved, moved theirs because they understood there was a proffer to build turn lanes, and they knew they had, they were torn up after the storm, and they had to, you know, reset them. So I know why they moved them back. But I mean, I don't know if, with Verizon, you can't, unless you build a turn lane, and then they have to move them. I think that's the whole, seems like the whole crutch of the argument is like, we're not gonna get the poles moved unless the lanes go, and the only other option would be if you don't like two like two poles, arrange to have AEP move their poles back beside Verizon's poles, maybe a foot back and then get Verizon to put, I don't know if they would do that, but, but then should all, should all of us pay for that?
Can they be on the same pole? I mean, they can, they can be on the same pole, right?
I think they were.
AEP is already put up.
They were at one time, weren't they?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was all together.
And, and the poles, I believe, are owned by AEP. And then the question becomes, who's going to service these old poles? Because AEP doesn't have any lines on them any longer and, you know, Verizon's kind of piggybacking on AEP's poles. So, you know, those are going to be unmaintained. And again, it is a safety issue. A lot of those poles are leaning and are weak and have been chopped off. So it's, it's not like it was over the years. It's gotten worse because of the tornado.
Sorry. Yeah.
If the turning lane, you know, if the turning lanes were put in there, and, and you guys have all said that that would not be a good thing for three, three of the residents there, maybe four. I mean, would you rather see the, the poles removed or would you rather see a turning lane put in?
To me, it's clear for the poles.
Yeah, because I don't know if we could have it both ways at this point.
I don't think you can. I mean, aside from those houses, the, it was stated that the turning lanes are not a good idea. I mean, to me, turning lanes are always useful, except for inconveniencing those three or four houses. But it certainly, if the traffic study had come back saying it was necessary, then they would have been put in without question. But again, that's all neither here nor there. It's, they're not required.
Well, the issue on, the issue on the table is, do we remove the proffer for that turn lane? So the question is, regardless of the poles, I mean, I grew up in this neighborhood. I understand about the poles. As a matter of fact, where that car is, I watched my brother, you know, get pushed into one of those poles. So I know, and this, and this well. And same brother got hit by a golf ball. We don't have to worry about that anymore.
And I have two brothers, so it's not as big a deal.
We took care of the golf ball situation.
We took care of the golf balls, which Marshall feels much better about. But the issue at the end of the day is, you know, that particular section even, I think deserves some attention from the standpoint of the turn lane. And the question on the table is, do we think that turn lane is necessary? I agree, it's probably not, maybe not called for now. My concern is if we look down the road some number of years, I think that turn lane is going to be important. So in my mind, just from the standpoint of that situation, I would be hesitant to remove the proffer. I think that turn lane needs to be, needs to go in, just from a straight-up traffic situation.
I'm going to speak. When the, it was first proffered, there was a reason to have it there. And the city agreed with a conditional use permit based on that proffer. They started construction on the project and they've changed the course of their project. That does not negate the reason for the proffer. And I feel that because we, the city, agreed to this project, it needs to be fulfilled. Just because you're not going, you're suddenly decided towards the end of the project, not to go the last third or whatever of the project. And people have already made plans. AEP has already done their job. They saw that, okay, we have a project coming up, let's do it now. Since the tornado took down the poles, we'll just go ahead and do our part for the project. So I feel it's very important that we go ahead and force this proffer and keep it intact and have the poles moved. Because, I mean, what's going to happen five years from now? They decide, well, we'll go ahead and put more houses in there.
They can't do that without coming back here.
Yeah.
I, I think I, I like, I agree with Tom Martin's request or, or suggestion that until this is figured out legally between the developers and Verizon, that we do not remove the proffer until the poles are figured out and you've worked it out with Verizon. And, and I hope that it does get worked out. I hope that you can come to an agreement that doesn't cost you more money, you know, fifty thousand or a hundred and sixty or whatever. I hope it works out. And then at that point, once the poles have been removed, I think, you know, we, we would be able to look at, at removing that proffer possibly, you know, with different eyes. But at this point, I, I agree with Tom and I, I just don't think that we should remove the proffer and let those stay like that.
Yeah, if we remove the proffer, it's going to take any leverage out of the negotiations with, with, with Verizon. And as sympathetic as I am to Mr. Shea's position and the, and the folks that are back in there, and as sympathetic as I am to the folks across the street, I go up and down that road two or three times a week at least and experienced everything that you all have said. Because I go up and I turn to the left to go to my home, which is only a couple of blocks away. But if we take the proffer out, I mean, we'll lose leverage and the problem will never get solved.
Right. And I think, you know, had, had, had this been approached a year and a half ago before the tornado, when those light poles were fixed, they would have been in the same place they had been before. They probably would have fixed all those poles, maybe moved them a little bit. And we wouldn't even have two sets of poles with some that are actually, no matter what you do, they're going to be unsightly if there's nothing there. They're so far back and they kind of bend out in the yard. It looks like an engineering mistake, you know. So, so I think that trying to solve something outside of this before we look at proffers is the best thing.
Can I make a comment?
Sure, you, sure, yeah.
You know, it's, the turn lanes are not warranted. They're just, by regulation, they're not warranted. We, let us move the poles and not, but not build a turn lane that's not warranted and not necessary and actually creates, ultimately creates a safety hazard for pedestrians for everybody. Let us carry Verizon's lunch for them. That's what it takes. Let us do that. But don't, just don't tear up all of Link Road for something that's not warranted because there aren't, there can't be any more homes built later. That's the whole point. It's, it's been reduced to sixty-eight with every, with, I mean, that would, that was our zoning agreement now. It would be that this would not, that we would not exceed sixty-eight as opposed to the eighty-four lots we originally had. It's no longer warranted by VDOT.
Right. And I, I think, Mr. Shea, I think that's kind of what we're thinking is, is if there's some kind of agreement that you can make, we might look at it with different eyes. Do you see what I'm saying?
We're just saying, work that out before we remove the problem.
Right, right. Because if we remove the proffer, then you can just walk home, drive home and not worry about it anymore at all. And it'll always stay like that. Or the city will have to pay for it.
Remove the proffer subject to us moving the poles.
Well, that's what, it's going to be worked out.
Yeah.
It sounded like planning was receptive to that, but it's got to be worked out.
Right. That would have to be worked out with Mr. Martin.
Well, when we...
Can we table it?
Yeah, I was going to make a motion that we table it pending the, pending the resolution of the pole issue.
Okay. I mean, anybody want to second that?
I second that.
Right.
Do that or if Mr. Shea wanted to, he could submit a proffer today, just stating that the second pole, second set of poles would be removed and Verizon lines would be relocated at the developer's expense.
Well, Mr. Shea, if you would like to, to take Mr. Martin's suggestion and jot that, that down, we could actually vote on that and you could make the proffer that you'll move the poles. And then we can kind of flip-flop those. I think that might be something, is that, was that what you'll think?
Well, if he, if he's prepared to do that today.
Right, if he's, we could table it also and let you think about it.
I don't want him to feel like he's got to be forced into it. I like the idea of the table in this situation, so that we're not out here at the last minute trying to build the ship as we're sailing it.
Right.
Well, and the, the other question too is, I'm assuming that Mr. Shea has the, the legal capabilities of speaking for all the, for the LLC. I'm just assuming that legally he's, he's able to, to make that proffer on his own.
This man right here does.
Okay.
I'm the holder.
Okay.
Well, this, you got a motion?
Yeah, you got a motion.
One of the difficult things in my mind is dealing and trying to negotiate with Verizon when they start out at a hundred and, a hundred, almost a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to move seven hundred feet of line.
I agree.
And then we question them, are you, are you replacing this line or upgrading this line? And all of a sudden, it goes from a hundred and thirty-eight thousand to, I think it was forty-eight thousand, which still is insane.
But we have no control over that. So if you would like more time...
Robin, I don't have any control over it either.
So we, all we can do is what's in front of us. But if you would like more time to negotiate with that, that's why we're discussing tableing it.
I think we'd accept the proffer if we knew the pole problem was going to, was going to resolve.
At no point do us build a road that doesn't need to be built.
Right, right.
I mean, if we're going to build a road and move the poles and...
Right. And planning was, is supportive of that as well. So I think, you know, we can table it and we can bring it back to vote, can make an agreement with Verizon, then we can flip-flop those proffers, get that taken care of, or you can make a decision if you would like.
Yeah, I, I just don't want to jump right now.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, that's very reasonable. Okay, so you'd second, and we had a second?
I'd second.
All right, we can vote on it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, so, great, so...
One thing I'd like to point out, and I don't know whether any of you have read or seen the traffic study we had done. But in the traffic study, it projects five years down the road after final build-out, that there's still not going to be enough vehicles per day to justify a turn lane.
It's an unfortunate, it's an unfortunate situation. It has, it has to do with your, you know, you'll scale back, the timing of the tornado, you know. I'm sure this might have been resolved differently had these things not come together. But hopefully you can come, come and, come back and get that, we'll get that all straight and get it all cleared up and it'll kind of meet everybody's needs. So, thank you for that. Thank you. Okay, we, we do have some unfinished business as well. Robin, you know that we had had a little discussion about how valuable you have been to us and how much we appreciate it. And, and my good friend here had, had written up a...
Resolution.
Resolution of appreciation. So we have something here for you and like to present it to you.
Hey, and see us.
Should I take it out of the bag? Is that...
Well, we're taking it out of the bag.
Oh, see, I don't know what I'm doing. He was telling me yes. Unwrap it. Here, here, unwrap it. You've got to unwrap that. Thank you.
I just believe it's going to be my last meeting. Well, my last planning commission meeting. Now I get to go to even longer meetings, right, Tom?
Well, instead of one boss, you'll have seven.
Exactly. That's what they, one of the questions on my interview was, how do you feel about working for seven people? This is really nice.
So we can see it. We've got to see it. Ah, very nice.
A resolution of the City of Lynchburg Planning Commission expressing appreciation to Robin Elizabeth Craig. Whereas Robin Elizabeth Craig has been an employee at the City of Lynchburg since December first, two thousand and four. And whereas Robin has served as the planning technician in the City of Lynchburg Planning Division since October eighteenth, two thousand and six. Tom didn't even remember how long I've been working for, almost...
And he's not even listening. He's just like unplugging things.
Whereas Robin was appointed by Lynchburg City Council to serve as the clerk of city council on April ninth, two thousand and nineteen. Therefore, be it resolved that the City of Lynchburg Planning Commission hereby expresses their highest degree of appreciation to Robin Elizabeth Craig for her professionalism and positive interpersonal and leadership skills. Now, therefore, be it further resolved that the City of Lynchburg Planning Commission wishes her the best as she continues in her distinguished career. Adopted unanimously April eleventh, two thousand and nineteen. Thank you.
Thank you. We always need someone like Cham on the, you know, someone who has all that, all that ability to write that kind of stuff. So...
Thank you so much.
Well, does anybody have a...
Be nice to my replacement.
Is there a replacement yet? Is it just Tom? You better get those minutes on. You better be on point. We're waiting for them.
I will say, Victoria Plasko, who joined us just a few months ago, has been doing an amazing job. So she'll be doing some stuff that I used to do, but then there'll be a, a replacement for me.
All right.
There's no replacement.
Great.
Thank you.
All right, well, if we have nothing else...
Nothing else, I'd boo for your German.
Second.
Oh, okay. All in favor? Aye. We're done.